Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 10th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristy, can I roll call please?
Here.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of minutes from the March 27th, regular and closed session. Move for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have approval of the bills, Mr. Morissette.
Mayor and council, I move approval of bills in the amount of $991,042.47, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, before we do public comments, I just want, I'd like to recognize a council member, Jeff Bjork, for, as he's leaving the council, just like to say a few words here. Jeff was elected to the city council two years ago in April of 2016 as an alderperson at large. Jeff has River Falls through and through, and loves everything about the city and especially enjoys its history. Jeff has served on the Historic Preservation Commission, Design Review Committee, and EMS Advisory Board. So we'd just like to take this minute to present Jeff with the plaque and thank him for all his hard work that he's done for the city in the last couple of years. Okay, next we move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. Yep, come on up.
Good evening.
Yes?
I'm Chris Plazius, and on behalf of the River Falls Chamber, as well as the Downtown Business Improvement District, I just wanted to express my appreciation toward the progress that has been made toward the wayfinding project that is on your agenda for discussion a little bit later. I just think this is an outstanding opportunity for us to continue to provide great guidance to our residents here in River Falls, as well as the visitors that come into our community. I think we all take great pride in what we've done with our community, and it's just, just has, is absolutely beautiful. I think some, some fresh signs that will guide us throughout the community will just be a little bit more icing on the cake, you'll say. We had a bid board meeting this morning, and we discussed it. Everybody was in, in great support of that project. So I just wanted to share that with you, and thank you for moving that forward. This is something that's been talked about for many years, way before I was at the chamber, so it's nothing new to you, but I'm excited to see it moving forward to the, to the next steps. So I just wanted to share with that. The second thing I wanted to share is extend an invite to you to an event that is coming up on Tuesday, May 8th. So River Falls has been selected as one of six communities within the state of Wisconsin to be acknowledged by the First Lady, Tenet Walker, as well as the Department of Tourism, for what is called a Walk with Walker event. So this event will take place here at City Hall, start and finish. We'll be doing a nice ribbon cutting for the new Kenny pathway. Starts at 10 o'clock, and it's an opportunity for us to focus on the health and wellness of our community and showcase it from a tourism and visitor aspect. So you'll be getting more information about that, but we hope you would consider joining us if your schedule allows. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody else in the audience, anything they'd like to talk about? Councilmember Downing has a report on a critical parking zone.
So I've been asked, I've been working on a critical parking zone, and I've been asked about this, and I've come to a point where I prospectively wanted to give, have a discussion here on the council for anyone who had questions today, to avoid a potential walk-in quorum and a lot of repeat questions. So I'm gonna try addressing as much as I can, and just kind of move on quickly here, too. Part of what I'm asking for today is a go-ahead from the council as a group, but I'm gonna actually get into the discussion and get sort of what I'm talking about here first. So a good question to ask is why a critical parking zone? The critical parking zone allows residents of River Falls to have places to park in front of their respective properties, or respectively closer than currently around the UWRF college campus. It's hard and difficult during the day to find a place to park when a lot of people from out of town, mainly students, are parking as close as they can to the college at peak times of the day. This is why this plan is specific with the 7:00 AM to 3:00 AM times. This plan should correspond with the school year and reflect what the zone is needed, no more or less than the needed is the goal. The college has no problem with charging considerably higher fees to students for parking on their property. They have no problem with that. Currently, the college has a monopoly on the students, charging them parking fees up to $326 a year. The college also has a monopoly on the parking spots that are in front of taxpayers' homes who claim residence within the city and pay taxes strictly to the city for the use of roads that they park on. So the problem is, if we don't currently have a parking zone that works for the people who live in the city first and foremost, who pay taxes and live here, what we have is a sprawling college that lacks parking. This plan will work for the people who live here and claim residence here first. It will also create accountability with the college to create more parking for their students. One of the problems we have also seen, and I know that there are many council members who can attest to this, as well as those who have read the local papers that our sidewalks are suffering, as well as other related projects that affect everybody, especially people who are disabled and people who are in wheelchairs. So instead of letting a bad situation get worse, controlling the situation, so it represents people who live in the city first, would do that while also meeting their physical needs. It would also provide appropriate funds to cement infill for improving our sidewalks, which is currently at a low number. There are many legitimate complaints. I want the people in that area to feel that they are being listened to, and that they have a city that will be responsive to their needs. Now, I've gotten other questions regarding how to best implement this. One thing of note, something councilmember Morissette pointed out, that a sticker would have to go on the plate, not the inside of a car's window, because snow would cover it up, which I'm in complete agreement with, that improvement. So there are changes and improvements such as that, which will happen to this, as well as curtailing the zone to work the best for the community's needs. Other feedback was that the alleyway should be kept on a separate plan, which also makes a lot of sense. What I'm asking is that we, as a council, tell our city staff to take one to two months developing this more than I have. It may take less time to do that than what I'm asking, but I've talked about what would be an appropriate way of doing this with the city administrator. We've identified that our administrator's 2017 to 2019 major work plan, that one of the goals, which is create a comprehensive, integrated marketing plan for economic development proficiency, could be put on hold due to the nature of it, could be paused for a period of time, then resumed without a problem. We could wait on it without being, we could wait on it and pause it for a period of time, then resume it without a problem. And I was curious, Scott, would you be able to elaborate on that, or Julie?
Elaborate on the project?
Just the item I'm looking at pausing for a month or two.
Yeah, the item, it contemplates doing a more aggressive and proactive approach to economic development marketing. It would likely involve some effort from administration and including the communications staff and also community development staff to develop. We've contemplated, we've contemplated delaying that for other reasons, too, just for workload. So it's a, it's obviously on the work plan, and it's up to council if they want to delay it.
So essentially, what I'm asking for is a period of up to two months delaying that particular action to work on the critical parking zone. So if anyone has any questions, I think this would probably be an appropriate time to discuss, you know, more ways of improvement.
Perhaps I'll start, because I live two blocks from campus.
Yeah.
It's not just students, it's faculty and staff who park on our streets, and River Falls would not be River Falls without the university. And I am not in favor of this, because frankly, I think even if we instituted, they'll just park farther away. We'll move the problem. You know, I assume there will be, you know, there might be some impact with law enforcement enforcing it, too. I don't know. But UW River Falls doesn't have the resources to build parking. They just won't. They just can't right now, if I understand that their funding mechanisms correctly. As it is now, disabled people can get parking on campus. They can get parking in front of their homes, if necessary. And students will just, just park further away and walk. If we want to do that as a kind of encouraging healthy living, that's one thing, but I want River Falls to be welcoming to these students. And I think this will just be seen as, you know, another bureaucratic expense for students who, many of whom, work two or three jobs trying to get themselves through college. So that's, that's my perspective. Also, my own street, the residents changed the parking zoning to allow residents only to park there with permits. So that also is available to people who perceive a problem.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, go ahead, Scott.
No, my comment was gonna be, this affects District 2 and District 3, so I'd really like to hear from Mr. Watson, Mr. Gagne, and their thoughts. I was gonna bring in councilmember Odine, too, but she beat me to the punch.
You know, I've actually had some solicitation by some owners of some buildings over by the Groton House District, which we just redid the parking, and I believe that was in your zone here. And I've actually heard from some residents over in that same area about how they get tickets for parking in, in front of their own house prior to this. This was quite a few years ago, and, you know, we got a nice big sign out there now that clearly marks the restrictions and where you can park, when you can park. We've accommodated the church there. However, the person that came forward to me that owned some of the apartment buildings knew going into owning their rental property that they have only so many spaces for so many rental units, and they have some options available to them to open up their, their parking. They haven't used them modes yet to get what they need for their, their students, essentially. I'm not in favor of this. I really think that we have an adequate system. When Cascade Avenue was in play, in implementation stage, I went to the university police department. I went down to our police department and talked to the previous chief. I've walked around every one of their on-campus parking lots, and yeah, they do charge a pretty penny to allow students to park there. However, there's parking available. It costs money to maintain them, that property. They gotta, they gotta maintain the asphalt, they gotta do snow removal, they gotta do a lot of other things than just, hey, it's an open parking spot. There's, there's a lot of overhead that goes into play with that. So there is parking available to students that are interested in parking on the facility. I'm not in favor of putting penalties and a lot of restrictions on the taxpayers of the city of River Falls. Do I think it's a terrible plan? No, I think, I think you're, you did your due diligence in looking into this. I just, like Diane said, there was a lot of resident input that went into the parking plan that they have in play now, and to try to change that, I think would be a detriment. To further that, we did a one-year moratorium, and in the end, removed some parking meters downtown, and on the side streets, we put a two-hour parking limit. Well, I see every day in that students park downtown, even in the two-hour parking limit, and then they walk over to the university in some of our public lots, taking up vital parking spaces, and then they come and move their car. You know, there's, there's more to it than just students doing that, but that's kind of the broad scheme of why I'm saying no to this, because students will just park farther away, and then will be coming back and taking more parking away from residents farther out into the community. So the college monopoly thing, I think I touched on that. It's not really a monopoly, it's a cost of doing business and maintaining their facilities. The sticker on the license plate thing, I like the idea. I think you would need to get some state law passed, or an exemption to allow any kind of sticker on the license plate, if I'm not mistaken. And then to pause economic development at this point for one to two months, I kind of have a problem with that. We're kind of in the heat of some economic development in the city of River Falls, and to do any kind of pausing on that or redirection of that would be a, kind of a step back of where we're headed. So that's all I have to say.
But anyone?
It's very solicitating the idea, though.
Appreciate it.
As far as my district goes, most of the area that you've outlined already has one side of the street parking, and residents can park on one side of the street without a problem, and students aren't allowed, essentially, without a tag. You have to be a resident. If you're a student with, that is a resident, you have a tag, or you can get one. And I haven't really heard any complaints. So I think overall, it's not broken right now. It did take some adjustment when we did that, I don't know, a decade ago, or maybe not quite that long ago, but everybody's kind of gotten the hang of it. In terms of a way to make money, hey, you got a good idea. So if that's the goal, that, you know, we can, we can pull some money out of some people's pockets and charge them for parking, but, you know, I don't really see that as my goal here with this. I don't, so I'm gonna pass on pushing for this to move forward. I think as far as my district goes, we're in, we don't have a problem situation right now.
All right. Well, thank you for the feedback, and, you know, I think, I've tried to provide an option for people who feel like they've been forgotten in some senses. Maybe it's not as many as I had perceived, and I appreciate the input from each of you. Maybe this is an idea that can be set maybe in the corner for a later date when it's more dense, not necessarily now, so.
Yeah. I appreciate you bringing it forward. It's good to hear this.
Yep. So I'll, I'll take that as a no, and I'll just submit it as an idea for maybe future plan-type idea. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next move on to consent agenda. First one is a resolution rejecting bid for 2018 sidewalk curb gutter and structure repair program. Next one is a resolution regarding agreement with HKGI Consulting Services. This would, resolution would authorize the city administrator, or his designee, to finalize an agreement with them for the next phase of the Kenny Corridor, River Corridor project. Next one is a resolution approving contract with Craig Rapp LLC for strategic plan update. Another one is a resolution appointing city treasurer, Susan Langer. Next one is a resolution approving agreement with city prosecutor, with the city prosecutor with the law firm of Baki Norman. Next one is a resolution regarding governmental responsibility for runoff management grants. This resolution would authorize staff to apply for 2018 Wisconsin DNR Urban Nonpoint Source and Stormwater Program Construction Grant, application to be used in conjunction with the St. Croix Street Pond Rehabilitation Project. And the last one is a resolution approving purchase agreement for the DeSantis property. This resolution would authorize the city administrator to finalize the purchase agreement for $200,000 plus closing costs for approximately eight acres of land on West Division. Does anyone want to poll anything?
Mr. Mayor, could I poll consent agenda items five and 10?
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve consent agenda items four, six, seven, eight, nine.
Second. Questions or comments on anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Downing, you polled five and 10. Start with five, I guess?
Yep. Resolution regarding agreement with HKGI Consulting Services. I'm just curious if this is an estimate or a figure not to exceed. What are we looking at with this?
Come on up, buddy.
Mr. Lucero is coming.
Mayor, city councilors, this, this is the agreement to complete the second phase, the actual amount. Is that what the question?
Okay.
Perfect. Thanks, buddy. With that, I move for approval, consent agenda item number five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number 10.
Resolution approving purchase agreement for DeSantis property. My quick question is what type of houses are these going to be? Are these gonna be side-by-side or over-unders? And what's the correct definition for them? This has been something I've been trying to figure out, looking at this.
At this time, all we're requesting is for the acquisition of the property. The if and when we do sell the property, the developer would have to go through the planning process, get approval through the planning commission, if they probably go with PUD, R2 City Council, to get the final approval. I know there has been discussion to placing twin homes on the property. Those kind of questions would be answered as we get the, more information from the developer themselves.
All right. Fair enough. I'm gonna move for approval, so go ahead if you have a question.
Go ahead.
Oh, I move for approval, consent agenda item number 10.
Second. Questions or comments?
I have a question on number 10. It's actually more of a comment. I just want to thank and not forget the residents of that neighborhood that came forward and expressed their opinions and views on a proposed property transaction that was to take place. And they, I think city staff solicited that idea to council to get some ideas, and the residents stepped up, and that's a great example of the people voicing their opinion on, on an issue that they want addressed, and they did just that, and this is what we get today. So, thank them for that.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to ordinances and resolutions. First one is Glen Park Renovation Project. Can we do it all at once? We got, we got A and B. Do we have to do each one separately?
I think it's advisable to do them separately, just to make sure that...
So the first one is a resolution awarding bid for the Glen Park Pavilion. This would award the bid for the Glen Park Pavilion to Ross and Associates, and authorizing ISG professional services necessary to oversee its constructions. And we do have Reed and Amanda are here, if we have any questions for them about the, about the pavilion itself.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution awarding the bid for the Glen Park Pavilion.
Second. Questions or comments?
This is just for part A, right?
Yep, just part A.
Yep, okay.
So as part A, does that include the costs, or the costs that on the park board did not take action on for elimination of certain things for cost-cutting, or is that in the B part?
I think is in the B part.
For the final design?
I just want to make sure.
Yep.
The resolution, Mayor, Council, City Engineer, Ronsky, the resolution I provided you would award the contractor, Austin Associates, for their base bid amount minus alternate, I think it was 85.
Yeah.
And that was just a $2,000 deduct for the historical panels. It's not that we're eliminating those. There was a little confusion in the bidding, and that seemed the appropriate thing to do. Our base bid included things like the metal roof and the plaza area out front. The park board recommended against accepting those deducts. They thought, they thought now was the time to build it right. So the resolution would, would accomplish what you, what you've seen in the, the pictures.
So with that being said, that is an A then. So is this the time where we would talk about, I have some issues with not air conditioning to the shelter part, but to the space, vent space, and I have some questions about the coloring of the concrete patio area, and, and also the sound dampening. We're, we're looking like we're pushing to be over budget already, obviously, and I'm just wondering if there's things that, that we're supposed to be discussing right now for cost-cutting, or do we look at this and say, this is it, and, and take it and go with it? So.
This would be the time, if you have grand objections, or maybe even medium objections to items in the bid, staff certainly always, even after we're authorized to proceed, we look for ways to find cost-cutting or valuation, I guess. But this would be the time that staff would be interested in hearing if there's objection, because we're, essentially, you're authorizing us to go forward with, with the bid as presented.
The resolution reflects the, the park board's direction at the park board meeting. When we went there and sought advice on things, Hal could speak to that, but there was debates on taking the air conditioning out, and taking the patio out, and all those things were batted about by the park board. This is their recommendation.
Right. And when I go back through that park board, and Alderman, Watson can correct, but I almost got the feeling or the conclusion that, well, we'll go with this, but we'll know that council will go back through and beat it up and do what they believe is correct. So I guess with that being said, I, I really don't see where air conditioning and the vent, now in the shelter part, I believe there has to be because of circumstances, but in the vent center, knowing that it's an outside building with the garage doors, and there'll be other doors, and opening and closing, and who's monitoring and watching the air conditioning, I just don't think it's a wise investment in that, not only for the short term, and I know it's only $11,000, but to run an air conditioning system on a basis will have a yearly cost. So I really think that's a one that should be eliminated, and I would hope that other people would feel that, too. I'm not, I'm not trying to talk about society as a whole, but it just seems funny. Here we are trying to go to a park and enjoy the outside, and then we want an air conditioning building, but perhaps that is part of the softening of our, our society, that we need to make sure everything is cushioned. But I would, I would like to see, as a start, A2 discussed or eliminated. And I don't know if anybody else has any feelings that, yeah, we should have that air, no, I agree, but...
I can speak for at least the majority on the park board. The discussion around the air conditioning, and it was batted back and forth and up and down several times, was that with an event center like this, and people renting this event center for events, like weddings, big, you know, this larger space here where elderly people would be coming in for events and things like that, and a lot of us remembering some really hot August-July summers, that no air conditioning in this event center was gonna be a detriment to be able to use it for those types of activities and those types of people. Like, who would rent this building for a wedding in the middle of the summer with no air conditioning in the building? So that's the kind of, that's some of the thinking that went on, and I think, like I said, we went back and forth on it. There was a proposal, not, you know, we looked at the costs, and we came back and finally decided, let's go ahead and do it now, rather than, you know, try to do it again in five years and be bringing this back before the council again. So that was the story on the, on the air conditioning.
Did you discuss potentially just using ceiling fans instead of...
Yep, we did. We did. And so, but like I said, I think the, the conclusion was that, you know, we'd get the best use out of the building with the air conditioning of the park board.
Just one item I'll throw out there, just a technical issue on the pavilion. It is set up where, when the garage doors, if the garage doors were opened, the air conditioning cannot be operated. It cuts it out. There's, they're talking to each other, so just...
I just have a quick question, too, on that. Is this something that could be added at a later date, if we find we need it?
It could, and that was, again, a discussion at the park board. This is leaving out the coils and leaving out the condenser unit that sits outside.
So you're, so you're roughing it in, anyway?
It would be, yeah. It's, it's ready to be added. It would just be coming up with that at the time, but it was a good discussion.
So for some clarification, is the city gonna have any kind of policy? I mean, are we gonna implement some kind of policy as, on a certain temperature day? We're gonna have staff go in and modify the temperature of this unit, or is this gonna be an open unit to anybody, just to go up and set the temperature that they're interested in? I mean, because if it's a 70-degree day out and low humidity, I mean, are we gonna allow people to crank on the AC in that building?
I'm Tom Schwellen with Facilities. The, there'd be a control system on the HVAC, so you wouldn't be able to go up and turn the thermostat up. The, this building would be programmed for events, so if the building's not gonna be occupied, it'd have a default of warm in the summer, and if there's an event, we'll, depending upon what the conditions are, we can adjust it. are, we can adjust it. So, staff would have control over that.
So, it wouldn't be running all the time?
No.
Just the people in that event wouldn't be able to go crank it down because they think seventy degrees is too warm on a ninety-degree day outside?
Yeah. There'll be some safeguards put in for both having it to come on in an occupied state and also programming it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Tom, would, would we have a, I know we've been talking about the SCADA system for a lot of the utility stuff. Would this have a similar type of thing where staff could, you know, Cindy could program it from her desk if she needed to?
Yes. It'd be on the same system that this building is in the library and the other shelter.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments about this?
On A2?
On A, yep.
Yep. And then if not on A2, then I just want to clarify, on A4, the $32,000, it says colored concrete patio area. So, what are we talking about there? Are we talking about coloring the concrete that we walk on? So, instead of having it concrete gray, it'd be concrete brown, or what are we saying?
In, in front of the... I'll grab this picture here.
So, you know, this is the pavilion building. The, the patio area we're talking about is this out front area, this whole thing here. Otherwise, we'd cut it off here. So, the patio area, this seat wall area out here, again, it just extends the event space outside the building. The colored concrete, you'll see, it just provides some architectural enhancements around there. It's certainly the quad, the add alternate is not just for coloring concrete. It's for building the seat wall. There's electrical outlets, things like that. It's this front area.
All right. So, that was, to me, that was confusing. So, it isn't just adding in the coloring. It's the whole thing. So, if you took off the coloring, you're maybe talking a thousand bucks, two thousand bucks tops, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not a lot of money.
Yeah, okay. Never mind. Unless somebody else wants a question, A4, I don't.
No, I, I had the same kind of question. Is do we really need colored concrete? But if it's, if it's not inexpensive, then, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. And then the last one's one, I just wanted to make sure. So, we're adding, was something that wasn't originally looked at, but we're adding sound dampening acoustics into the panel or into the event center area for six grand?
No, that would be actually in the, in the shelter, in the storm shelter area.
In the storm.
Oh, in the storm shelter.
Yeah. And, and, you know, the, I think the issue there was, a lot of people have experienced Hoffman, and I would say, wait and see. This is a different space, different use. We can add these panels later, too. And so, we, we did get a price on that, but they're in the concrete roofed area.
But that's in the storm shelter. Okay. Now, that, I have no questions on that then, unless somebody else does.
Okay. Anything else for A? We got a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Now, B, the resolution approving Glen Park preliminary plan and authorizing professional services for final design of Glen Park renovation project.
I have a...
I'll entertain a motion on it first.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of resolution approving Glen Park preliminary plan and authorizing professional services for the final design of Glen Park renovation project.
Second. Questions?
I have a quick question here. I'm not against this idea, but I think we have an opportunity, and I'm going to explain the opportunity. We have a little homework to do. I'm concerned about this project potentially being a Swiss Army knife. I want it to be good at, really good at one thing, because we have different parks that meet different needs. So, we're doing a renovation project that does not include a new pool or plan to have one, from my understanding. I'm talking about a nice pool. The homework I'm talking about is having a partnership potentially with the school district and/or the college to help pay for a bigger year-round facility. Go in half with them as a partnership. That would make the park really good at meeting the target goal for the city and the school. I can tell you, the youth do not like going back to their school to use a pool or hotel that has a pool that is too small. So, I think, you know, I think the pavilion is a realistic and good goal. The splash pad, albeit a good goal, should not be a priority over a project that includes a new pool. If I was a parent, I'd want a new pool for the future that can be, one that can be year-round, something for the youth to do and enjoy every day of the year. However, a pool that has adult swim hours later in the day, and that is easy to use for the handicap people in the city, is extremely important. I think we should consider tabling for a month until we at least try to work out a partnership with the school district and/or the college to improve our community for the long term and do it in a way that gets the best results for everyone. Part of the reason of tabling an idea, and I love parks a lot, is so we can have the plan that can be improved. We can always go, you know, if, if we get a know from them, we can proceed with this plan, because it's also a very good plan. We might find if we nip and tuck in certain areas properly, we can improve this plan by a lot. If that means removing smaller parts to achieve a better target goal for the city, we need to have open minds. We can do short-term gains any day. As a council, I don't feel too obligated to doing it today with, within a timely manner I think we can agree on. However, if we could create a partnership, we could have a bigger and better things for the city and the people who live in it. That is my point. If we table it, we can create a partnership. I have no problem voting for this. Then at least we explore the full potential and scope of Glen Park. However, I don't think we should close the door on an opportunity to split the cost with the local college or schools to make this plan something great for the entire community. So, we know that we are not desperate. We know that we can wait. This process should take two weeks nor more than a month to just call and ask the school district and/or college about a partnership. So, we wait a little bit to hear back from our school district and our local college if they are interested in partnering for a better pool that would offer much better service for the city, be year-round potentially a dome or other ideas that would make it more inviting. Partnerships are the fiscally responsible thing to do for improving the city for everyone. There is a need in the community for having an improved pool. This is an eighty-year-old pool, does not, you know, does not take into consideration what we really are renovating for the people. With that, I make a motion to table this resolution for a month and intern to conversations regarding partnerships with local schools and the University of Wisconsin River Falls.
No second? Okay.
I'd like to further talk on this, so if I could, Mayor.
Yep.
I, I have no necessarily issues with this situation that we're talking about this resolution. But what I do have, and I think Cindy would probably be the first one to mention it from the park board, I know there's a lot of drive, and we're going forward with the pavilion, and I think it's going to be a great-looking pavilion. But I really do think the next agenda, the core, the acorn, the seed of this park is the, the swimming pool. And I really think it's a mistake for us to step outside beyond, beyond the pavilion in the pool and do, start to look at other things before that pool's done. As Alderman Downing said, the pool's been around for eighty years. And I use the word seed, acorn, the root, the core of the park is that pool. And for us not to take care of that and manage that first, I think it's a major mistake. And I think we're, we're getting the cart in front of the horse. But God bless us for thinking that we're doing right.
You know, I would, if I may step in, you know, we got an eight-point-one million-dollar project, and we've scaled it down to, I think, four-point-four million over the course of this whole planning process. And one of the first things that I brought up to the, the folks on this council and I think other councils that I've been on and city staff is, I'd love to see the park taken care of as well by getting a new pool at the same time as a splash pad. But it's been brought up to me that we can put the splash pad in and then renovate a pool in the future. Do I think it's a mistake not to do the pool now? Yeah, I, I think it is. I've heard from a lot of people, not just residents, but also lifeguards and staff that work out at that pool that say that it's overcrowded, that they have inefficiencies out at that facility. So, I, I think it's a mistake as well. Am I willing to deal with that pool project in the future? Yeah, I, I see the bigger picture on it. And I think I'll be voting in favor of the resolution as put in front of us. However, I think the next step would be to address that pool.
And I'm going to make one quick point. You know, if we bond now, we're going to save money by locking in the interest rate. If we wait, the market's saying the interest rates are going to go up, and we're going to get hit with a higher interest rate on that pool. If we don't do something about it in a, in a timely manner, so I'm not going to be voting in favor of this unless it includes some type of partnership, or at least a look at our tabling of it.
If I may, I, I think your partnership is a wonderful idea. It won't happen in two weeks. That's more like a two-year or more cycle to put something together in, in front of the governing boards of both the university and the school district. And what you're talking about is, sounds kind of like an aquatic center. That may not be the right site for an aquatic center. There may be, it may be something that we can have in addition to an outdoor pool that we've always had in Glen Park, which I agree is, is the heart of that park. So, I, I think by voting for this, we're not precluding the idea of a partnership in the future, but I believe that would take a while to develop.
So, we're still open to that potential idea of a partnership, is what you're saying?
I am.
Okay, I am.
That I am also, and that there were a lot of hard decisions that the park board had to go through to get this project down to four million. And one of them is basically acknowledging the fact that we can't afford a pool right now. Simple, as simple as that. But we can make improvements around the pool, like the splash pad and, and some of the other improvements to that area. And what the park board's really doing with this, and the, and the way those enhancements are being made is in such a way that the pool work can be done later on. So, we're not precluding or blocking, you know, physically blocking anything happening with the pool. But really, what this project does is lay the groundwork for whatever this next phase is going to look like. But it, this is, I don't want to say the skeleton, but really the framework for the future park with some enhancements like the splash pad and then, you know, even some of the play equipment, or this, this circular area in the center will be ready for play equipment, but we need to do, we're going to have to have a partnership with the community on that and to get, you know, some of that equipment. And so, we felt as a, as a park board that the splash pad and the, and the play area were two projects that we would be able to find partners within the community who would want, you know, to come forward with naming rights and some other, you know, options that, you know, we can throw out on the table, you know, to help us make those things happen. The pool itself is something that I'm interested in, you know, I, anyway, I, I'm interested in helping to make that happen in the future, too. But it, there's just no way we could make it work here.
I have one quick question since you're on the park board. When you were looking at putting this plan together, I originally saw a lot of pavement in it. Were there some reductions so we could actually get the splash pad and other items into this then with the pavement?
Yes. The, the reduction, the whole area, the whole kayak kind of area over to the west side, there's a whole parking lot over there that got completely removed, and the circular traffic pattern around supporting kayakers coming in and out was modified pretty heavily. So, we took out a whole parking lot, and I'm not, we managed to hold on to a lot of the parking spaces. It was a very, it was interesting the way that worked out.
Yeah, it's, it's subtle. You know, if somebody flashed this up, you probably would think it's the thing you've been looking at all along. We could show you the, where there was. But right, right where the softball field is, the design that came out of all our public involvement process had a kind of offline parking lot with a couple different aisles through there.
Right.
Rather substantial parking lot. You can see what we've done. And again, ISG has done a very good job listening to feedback on how to tweak this thing down, simplify it. We've eliminated some of that parking, and we've added a little bit of parking just north of there on the left side of the road. That's on top of pavement that we feel has a possibility of being saved. There's a certain amount of pavement out there that was redone recently in the two thousands when a new sewer line went through there. And we're looking at saving that pavement, both in front of the pickleball court and then up on the road for parking on the left-hand side. So, we, we actually increased the parking by doing, by doing this by a spot or two. We didn't decrease it, but we saved a significant amount of monies in curb and gutter and asphalt. Will everybody like it better? Maybe, maybe not. You know, there's some downsides to the parking along the main spine, too, but it'll work very well.
Just to follow with respect to the kayaking, part of the thought process is that as the lower dam becomes removed eventually, there's an option, and maybe even sooner, for moving, for providing a dirt road access or some other type of access on the north or on the west side of the river, down beyond the water treatment plant. So, try to get that kayak loading and unloading out of the Glen Park area.
Okay, Morrison. Keep backing on Councilmember Odine's comments about the partnership. There are a lot of, there are a lot of community organizations out there, I think, that are interested in finding, have been waiting for ways to participate. As far as partnering with the schools and the university, I don't think we should lose sight of the fact that a week ago, the school district had a forty-million-dollar referendum go through, and I think there was a lot of question about question number two. Not trying to be critical of the school district at all, but they had a real tough time with number two, which was essentially their, their athletic facilities. It passed, and I think it was the right thing. But for them to come back and ask for support with a pool, I think would be, I don't think they would have the appetite, and I don't think the voters would have the appetite for that. The university is not going to have funding right now to provide a partnership there. But again, places like the River Falls Rotary Club, which I happen to be a member of, we're looking for how to participate in the park, and it might be, it might be through the play, through the playground stuff, or it might be the splash pad. It might be any of those kind of things. So, I think those partnerships exist. I don't think our ability to go to the school board or the university are, are in the realm of, of possibility at this point.
Alderman Morrison, I agree with you completely on that, on the organizations. When you look at the Glen Park throughout the years since it was first bought, really for a nickel or a dollar, whatever it was from the Powell brothers, that park has always been a community park. And the playground is, equipment's always been bought and actually installed by organizations, whether they were J.C.'s or the Lions or whoever they were. The road or the first pavilion that was put up was put up by a group called the Women's Improvement League. So, it's always been a community park, and it's had lots of community dollars put into it. Not necessarily a lot of River Falls tax dollars, because the people have had a lot of pride in Glen Park. And I hope that we allow that opportunity for people to come in. And the reason that they were coming in before is because we had that core, we had that seed of the pool that they wanted to be part of. So, if we're looking at this direction now where we're looking that we're going to, in a sense, put those outside things in place, it might be tough to get somebody that, your Rotary Club or whoever to dish out the money for the park pool, but maybe they will. You guys have deep pockets, potentially.
Come to a meeting.
Yeah. I won't be agreeing with this just because I think our pri, I like what it is, but I think the priorities are backwards on this. So, I wish us luck.
You know, I, I'll just piggyback off of what just about everyone here said about the partnerships. There's been extensive conversations and workshops throughout this process and between the council, park board, and many others about capital campaigns, and I think that's the term that we coined it, and move that forward and any other future projects here. I think that four million, four-point-five million-dollar price tag has really been kind of the, the keystone of where we started here. And anything above that, we kind of want to move towards capital campaigns and these partnerships. And, you know, I think the same thing that we've talked about in Hoffman Park, when we go forward with that project in the future, we want to see more capital campaigns come from that upfront. And that's kind of what I heard resounding among a lot of council and other members of the community. So, it's like we're on the right track.
I just want to thank the park board real quick, because one of my biggest concerns was seeing too much pavement. We might actually lose the items in the park that everybody really wanted. So, I am in favor of this plan, and I just thank them for making sure that we could get those items, because what makes the park is pavement. And I think that's the lesson to be learned in voting for this. We're going to get a bunch of good items in this.
Okay, anybody else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion on B. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do. First and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. On to number 12 is a initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed three million, six-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand for Parks and Public Grounds project. This resolution will provide the sale of approximately three million, six-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand in general obligation bonds for the Glen Park project. This financing will include the construction of the pavilion and the pavilion. This financing will include the construction of the pavilion and the proposed renovation project planned for construction in 2019. I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the resolution providing for the sale of bonds in support of the Glen Park project.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I think we, like Ms. Berg's from our eye to talk a little bit about kind of what the processes for this.
Yep, that'd be great. Yep.
I would like that.
I'm going to take the lead, Julie.
Thanks to your ladies.
I was wondering what you were going to say. So you have three resolutions to, to set this sale. The first one is just approving the, the concept of, yes, we're going to issue debt. It's a not to exceed resolution. It will be less than that unless we go way astray, and it will be less than that. We started out with, excuse me, some numbers about two, three weeks ago, and Reed and the consultant were still finalizing everything, so it should be right as Reed has projected at 3.41 plus issuance costs, which are about $94,000. So 3.5 is the expected amount that will come back to you on June 12th for approval of the bids. The first resolution again is setting the sale. The second one says that we will publish a notice to the electors, and if they really don't like that idea, they could come in and, and say we don't like it and can call this off. I think they have 30 days to do that. And the third resolution was to define the terms of the sale, that it will be a negotiated sale, we'll be taking bids. It's not, I shouldn't say negotiated. It would not be negotiated, it would be taking bids from companies, so.
So we're looking at $309,000 a month would be our debt service costs?
The, the projected lower amount, it would be about $295,000 per year.
Yeah, per year.
Year, not per month. Per month would be a lot.
I was like, yeah, that makes sense, sorry. Yeah, per year. So what would the, what would the total cost of this be for us?
With interest?
Yeah, with interest.
Um, 4.4.
4.4.
Some change.
So what would be the total cost of interest? So would we take 4.4 minus the?
$908,000 is the projection.
And do we have any kind of projections of paying this off early? Have we looked at any?
Well, not yet.
Not yet. I know, I know you're always looking at paying debt off early and we appreciate that. And I think you guys have done a great job of doing that so far. We're just kind of, are you guys looking for ways to do that quicker?
We certainly would if we could. This has been in the fiscal plan for a few years. We had put in some funding in 2018, about $200,000 that could go towards debt service. And then one of the other things we were looking at is payments from TID number eight, which is University Falls. That is close enough, so increments from there could go towards this project. So we have some funding sources.
Thanks.
Julie, I've got to, I asked you this question prior to the meeting too, but help me understand again why we're asking for 3.695 when we think it's only going to be, why wouldn't we tighten up our not to exceed number?
Hindsight, I should have.
Okay.
It was just in the works and I could have called and gotten new resolutions from our bond council, and I probably should have.
So if, if I make a motion today to tighten that up to?
You can.
Three, what would you say the number would be, 3.5?
Three, $3,505 is the number we're expecting.
Not over that.
If you want to, you could do that tonight.
That makes sense. I would make a motion that we amend the not to exceed amount from $3,695 down to $3,505.
Second.
Any, any questions on that? All in favor of doing that?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, back to the original, any more questions on the original motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, 13 is resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issue.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, we need a roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, you do, that's right. Forgot about that, it's money, money, money. Christie.
Bjork.
Upstein.
Pardon me?
I'm not going to vote on it.
Odine.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Morsett.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Biersted.
Yes.
Do we need a roll call on my motion? My amendment?
For the dollar.
Because that's just lowering the dollar amount?
We don't need a roll call in the amendment.
Okay. So back to 13, the resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to the bond issue. I'll take a.
I move, I move approval of the resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to the bond issue.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, last one is the resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed, okay now, so we're going to switch this to then, right? I'm assuming, okay. 3.6, 3, 3.4, well, 3, $3,695,000 general obligations park project bonds series 2018 one A, sorry, A.
I make a motion, we approve a resolution not to exceed $3,695 for park obligation bonds.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I make a motion that we amend the amount not to exceed to $3,505.
Second.
Questions or comments on that? All, all in favor of changing the dollar amount?
Got to do dollar.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, now back to the regular motion. Any other questions or comments?
Do we got to do a roll call?
Yeah, we'll do a roll call on this.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Morsett.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Biersted. Bjork.
Being out on council anymore, no, I, I, Upstein.
Okay, move on to resolution approving community signage and wayfinding master plan. All entertain a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the community wayfinding signage plan.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Is there a place that people in the community can go to visualize signs that are already made by this company to have an idea what they might look like if they're curious?
That's a good question.
You mean other than the packet?
Other than, yeah.
Yeah, they have like a website that they've, work they've done, their portfolio.
Brandy?
Brandy's coming up. The company is called Guide Studio, so they do have a website with work products available to view.
Guide Studio?
Guide Studio, yep.
Would it be possible to have the illustrations that are in the packet be put up on our website as a project page or something like that?
Sure, we could definitely do a project update.
I think that would be helpful.
Good idea.
Yep, thanks, Brandy. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, move on to reports. Emergency government report. Chief Young will give us a little, nope, Chief Young will not give us a little report.
Mayor, council, Sergeant Scott Banger, he's going to present to you tonight.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
All right, good evening, mayor, council, thanks for having me. Chief Sergeant Banger, patrol officer with the River Falls Police Department. So I just have a quick presentation here about emergency preparedness. So Severe Weather Awareness Week was established in Wisconsin as April 9th through the 13th of this year, established by the state of Wisconsin, the federal government. So in honor of Severe Weather Awareness Week, we'll be doing weather testing throughout the city. Our first one will be at 1:45 PM on April 12th. This one's, allows to go out during the day for school districts to hear daytime workers and practice drill work throughout the day. Second siren is at 6:45 PM, and that's for families at home, practice, second shift workers, those of us who are still out and about in the evenings. So as annually through the summer of 2018, we have siren testing on the fourth Monday of every month. That's with the exception of this week because of the Severe Weather Awareness Week and also for Memorial Day Week. Or Memorial Day Weekend, the testing is pushed back one week earlier in the month, so people are around to experience it. And we have eight weather testing, or eight weather sirens in the city of River Falls. The map above just shows the locations of each siren. The sirens, when they are sounded due to severe weather, they alert for a three-minute period on their outdoor alert, so they're designed to alert individuals outside of their residence to seek shelter and tune into the weather. So our, the River Falls Police Department, we signal our sirens when there's immediate danger of a tornado or severe thunderstorm with dangerous winds of 70 miles per hour or more, or storm conditions exist and there's public sightings of a tornado or reported So types of hazards we could experience in River Falls, excuse me, tornadoes and severe weather storms, severe winter weather, flooding, and human caused or other hazards we could be experienced to are fire, hazardous materials, nuclear power plane accident, airplane crash or terrorism. Tornado information, always pay attention and be prepared during severe thunderstorms. Warnings or tornado watches, always take tornado warnings serious, take immediate action to protect yourself and others. If you're outside, go inside and seek the best available shelter. Go to the basement or lowest interior room of your residence away from windows. Most tornadoes occur in the afternoon or evening during the spring and summer, but may occur anytime. Avoid downed power lines and avoid flooded roadways. So currently in River Falls, we do have the Hoffman Park Storm Shelter in place. The shelter can house approximately 360 people. It is open to the public, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. In addition to the Hoffman Park Shelter, as previously mentioned tonight, the Glen Park is also in the works to have a secondary shelter available to citizens in the city. This is just a basic scale of our, the levels of tornado and the damage they can cause. Obviously EF0 being the lowest, EF5 being the highest level. Our tornado shelter is being a masonry and steel structure, can withstand the higher levels of the tornado threats that we could see. We do, our police department, the River Falls Police Department does have our officers all attend a storm spotter class offered through SkyWarn. This is also available to the public. The website listed there is a link that anyone can follow to check class dates and, and choose to attend if they wish to do so, but as, as our department, we do send all of our officers there to attend. Emergency preparedness for disaster event, tornado or things along those lines, these are just things personally you can do. You can have a kit available at your residence and kind of a recommended basic guideline is having a three-day supply of food or water, a battery-operated radio, flashlight, first aid kit, personal medication, hygiene items, important family paperwork or things that you would want to take with you if you had to leave your residence. And then having a place in plan, or a plan in place with family members, children in your household, having a common contact person to be able to be in touch with, having a meeting location if you're separated or unable to meet with your family away from your residence, knowing evacuation routes from your home to exit the city or the area of your house. And just a preemptive thing you can do is also have training in first aid and CPR. Listed up there is the Alina Health Organization link. They do offer CPR classes if, if anyone is interested in attending, they could do so. And then this is the federal government's website for emergency preparedness, the www.ready.gov site. Once, if you follow that link, it basically is a layout of different disasters that could strike and preparedness you could take to be more prepared for those, you know, flooding, tornadoes, hurricane, you know, they do the whole list, so. And some weather resources that are just available to anyone in the public, a lot of us, everyone has a smartphone, and having radar apps on your phone or weather channel alerts, and also the National Weather Service site is listed on there. The bottom right-hand sign you see the Everbridge. I won't speak in detail about this, but the Everbridge, it's a calling, mass notification calling system. There has been some discussion with Pierce County Emergency Management, who does the activation of Everbridge of, you know, possibly in the future linking that with our tornado alert. So if a siren goes off in the city, the mass notification would go out where individuals could receive text or phone calls, also alerting them of emergency weather that might be occurring. And that's the conclusion of my presentation. If you have any questions, obviously you can, or always you can contact us, the River Falls Police Department, or stop in to see us, so. Any questions from you at all this evening?
Any questions for Sergeant?
Have we sent out?
Any more?
What's that?
Is it going to stop snowing?
We all hope so.
I think you guys need to find that Elsa and take her into custody. I'm just commenting on your Facebook pictures of trying to find Elsa and getting her to stop her frozen spells, that's great. Have we used any Everbridge communications with the community at all? I, I don't think I've seen any.
No. We've, we've used, so far Facebook has been our communication with the public, more so, or even our website, but we have not used Everbridge at this time.
And currently, what is the protocol as far as sending mass communications out? At what level do you, or events would you send an Everbridge communication?
It depends on the situation, but just saying if there was a tornado, and if the tornado did touch down a certain area of our city, then a mass communication would go out saying that a significant weather event happened, tornado struck certain areas to keep away until further notice, and then we present either evacuation routes for those inside or even direct traffic around.
Okay.
And we can even pinpoint it. You can, you can basically pick a map, but you can pick the, the blocks, radius or rectangle, whatever you want to do to send out a notification in a certain area.
All right, thanks.
Does there also any questions?
Just to be clear, that capability is something that Pierce County is discussing whether to go forward with, or is it in place right now?
They're in discussions if they have the capabilities for weather emergencies, whether they can use Everbridge.
There already is the capability in other types of emergencies?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Sergeant Banger. Okay, next, move on to, are you utility director, Kevin? White House is, or West House is going to give us a little update on number, well number five.
It's going to be a two-man show tonight. Ron Growth, our water, wastewater superintendent is here, kind of like Ed McMahon and Johnny Carson, I'll be the Ed McMahon tonight, so. We're going to talk about our well five. Well number five is out on West Division Street. If you're heading west on Division Street, right before you get to DeSantis Park, you've seen this building here, maybe some of the rumors have been that's a federal missile silo or something. It's not, it's actually our well number five, about 375 feet deep into the ground, getting water. A little over a year ago, we had a, a motor changed out in that well, down in the well casing. Since we had that motor changed out, we were having a few problems with getting chloroform bacteria in our well shaft itself, not in the water that's delivered to our residents, which was always safe, but our raw water samples, we had some negative samples there. Ron's worked on that, and Ron's going to talk to you a little bit about what we did to remedy that situation and where we're at today. So, Ron?
Here's kind of the initial timeline. As you can see, like Kevin was saying, what started it all is we had, you can see that, you can see the well and the motor, it's kind of the straight up, the vertical portion. The horizontal is actually what's our standby engine. So in case of a power failure, we can still run the well. It's a diesel engine that'll actually pump water. And what happened was we were getting noise in that well, and with that well, basically it hangs on a shaft all the way down that 300 feet Kevin was talking about. There's a pump at the bottom that hangs on there, well that noise can transmit up that discharge pipe, make noise at the top, or it could be a motor bearing, or it could be a number of things. So we had to determine what it was. It ended up being a bearing housing in that right angle drive. We pulled everything out at that time, we had about a year, and we're going to pull the well anyways for normal maintenance, so we went ahead and pulled it.
I was going to say that was March 2017, if you can't do that.
Okay. So then, basically, we reinstalled everything, just like we normally would, fixed what needed to be fixed. Everything was put back together, and just according to Safe Drinking Water Act or DNR code, we took our two safe water samples 24 hours apart. Both of those samples were good, so we could put the well back online, that's normally how it works. So second quarter came around, we had to do our raw water sample again. So we took our first sample and it was chloroform positive. So at that point, what protocol says is you need to take a follow-up sample to do a verification. We took that second sample, and the second sample was good. So at that point, you're thinking, well, it's, it's sampling errors. So, at that point, you're thinking, well, it's, it's sampling error, something to that, sample got contaminated somehow. Um, so, just to be on the safe side, we actually took a third sample, and that sample also came back good, so we thought we were clear. And that was, we put the well back online according to DNR code. Um, that would've been in the second quarter of two thousand and seventeen, so that would've been, um, it would've been, uh, I think it was June when we took that sample, so. And then the third quarter, so this is the third, we, we test quarterly, that's what's required for the raw water.
So, at that point, I have to interject, Ron and I were thinking, without just a bad sample, right? We, we sampled initially, it was good, we got one bad sample mixed in there, we went, well, that just must've been a contaminated sample, and we're, we're good.
Sample bottle, somebody, yeah, somebody touched something they shouldn't have, whatever, but, so third quarter came around, so now, um, it's looking a little more serious, we take a sample, um, it's chloroform positive again, and this was, this would've been into the third quarter, which I believe was in August when the sample was done. Uh, we took our second sample, we had to do the follow-up, that was, again, was positive for chloroform bacteria. And all along, these were all, 'cause what we'll do is, um, chloroform is the indicator, and you do, you also through that same test, you do for E. coli, that's the more serious contamination, none of these samples ever tested positive for E. coli. So, I, at that point, what we did is we looked at some things, um, some of the, the pressure level transducer, where it runs down into a conduit into the well, resealing that up, um, resealing the, the, uh, housing where the motor sits on top of the well shaft, resealed all that, um, so then we went and re-chlorinated to disinfect everything. You can see, we took our two follow-up samples, was safe again, we're thinking, well, it must've been something, contamination was getting into that well shaft from, you know, something that wasn't sealed properly that we resealed. Um, so the well was put back online, and beyond the safe side, the two following weeks after that, we took samples and both of those samples were safe. So, at the, after pumping the well for two weeks, so, um, we thought we were sitting pretty good at that point. So, the fourth quarter came around, and this would've been in, um, beginning of November, we took another, our sample, our all-water sample was chloroform positive again, um, the follow-up sample was also positive, so at this point, you know, it's a reoccurring problem, I mean, we, we did everything we could do up top, there's not much else we could do. Talked to the DNR, talked to some well maintenance companies, tried to get some ideas, um, you know, I, we came up with a few, with a game plan, basically, what, how we wanted to approach this, um.
I was gonna say too, we also took the well offline at that point.
Always, yeah, when all, all these samples are, are positive, even for, just for chloroform, it's taken off of line until we get safe samples. And then, we re-chlorinated, the, the theory was that they thought, well, maybe, um, there was some residual left down in there, could be a type, we did, actually did a bacteria ID, we found out what type of bacteria it was, and a colony, uh, how many colonies there were in there, and it was, it was a minimal amount, it was one colony per hundred mils, that's about as, as low as you can measure, but we can't have any, so that didn't matter. We knew we had it, it just wasn't in a very large concentration. So, they said chlorinated a little heavier than what you normally did, and, um, you know, try it, let everything sit for the twenty-four hours, re-sample, so we did, and at that point, the sta- samples were still unsafe. So, then we brought in, um, municipal well and pump, um, I talked to a number of contractors, got some different ideas, kind of their ideas that I thought made the most sense, we kind of followed their timeline or their procedure, what they were kind of proposing. So, we had to pull the pump out again, and what we did, uh, we wirebrushed the entire well casing, so they had a, a wire brush that went down through that three hundred some feet of casing, scrubbed the sides, cleaned all the residue off, uh, we televised it, they actually have a, it's a lot like sewer televised, and they stick a camera right down in that pipe, and they can, you can see the pipe, um, right through, you know, right down to the bottom of that well. And then, after all that was done, we did a chemical treatment, um, there was a mixture of chemicals, there was, it was acid, um, a product called Claratus, which is a descaling agent to clean everything up, and then hypochlorite, which is, uh, a stronger chlorine. And at that point, what we did, then everything was reinstalled at that point, um, we pumped the well to waste, had to pump everything out of there, um, you know, basically clear everything up, at that point, there was a lot of sediment stirred up, we needed to clear out the water. So, the first sample, after all that, we took a sample and it was chloroform positive, so we're thinking at this point, went through this whole process, and, you know, we're still positive on chloroform. Um, talked to the well driller or the well maintenance company, they said, you know, just hang on a minute here, go ahead and, uh, pump it to waste again, you know, pump it for two, three hours to waste, they said there could be some residual left in there, we're still getting some solids, suspended solids in that water coming out, so we did. Uh, we ran it for additional two hours the following day, um, and you can see total, we ran a half a million gallons to waste out of that well. Flushing it out to, to clear everything up, remove all the sediment that it was, broke loose from, you know, that aggressive treatment. So, we took our two follow-up samples, um, those samples were both safe. So, what we did is we let that well sit for, um, till the following, uh, that was over the weekend, so the third day, we re-sampled again, we were still safe, so at that point, you know, we're, we're feeling better about it at that point. So, at that, we, we could begin pumping water to the system all the time, maintaining a chlorine residual, 'cause throughout this process, like Kevin said, we never had positive samples in the distribution system because we always chlorinate, and that's why we do. And, um, we've sampled weekly for the next month, and the samples continued to be safe, all the way up through last week now, that sample was still safe. And, uh, just some takeaways, um, you know, I think every, it, it, the process worked like it should, we followed Safe Drinking Water Act sampling protocol, um, we did everything by the book, and, um, you know, the water entering the distribution system again was safe, we never had, uh, we do that, we monitor throughout the distribution system, we take five samples every week, so we can check areas to make sure there isn't, uh, any, any chloroform bacteria in the system, never was, we never had any detecs. So, I guess at that point, you know, we're sitting here now, I think we're about six weeks into it, and, um, we're still pumping, we haven't had another detect, so I think we, we took care of the problem. You know, the whole, I guess we'll never know for sure, what the thinking was, was, um, that bacteria, the bacteria was, it, it formed like a protective layer around it, we chlorinate, we kind of shock it, we'd knock it back, but it wasn't quite enough to kill it off, so that aggressive treatment, when we went to that more aggressive treatment, it took care of it finally, we finally knocked it out of the system, flushed it out, and, uh, we are where we are today.
I just wanna say one thing too, and Ron kind of downplays the protocol thing, but one thing I'm really confident with Ron is, anytime there's an issue, he's on the phone to the DNR right away, he's following everything by the book, all reporting mechanisms, all testing, all lab work is done by the book, there are no corners cut at all on that, so, uh, we do everything on the up and up and make sure that we have safe drinking water for our community.
Yeah, and I'd like to say all the guys that, uh, work in the water department too, they all, I mean, that's a big responsibility for them, they all take it very seriously, safe drinking water, that's number one goal.
It was a big deal, and we thought it was worth your time to hear what happened with that well, you know, people have questions and whatnot, and are there any further questions tonight?
I have a quick, could you clarify for the public, just, just so the public knows, when we got raw water, which is before we treat it, that had the chloroform in it?
Correct.
And then when we had the wa- raw water test, when that came back positive for the chloroform, we took the well offline?
Correct.
Even on the raw water, knowing that it would still be treated and, you know, potentially would be okay after the treatment, but we, how long has, has that well been offline before we brought it back on? Like, uh, December, was that when it went off?
On November?
November?
November.
November, okay.
So, early November, when we finally had that, like, third incident, and we were like, just take it offline now, and, until we can figure out what's going on with the raw water.
So, it's been offline from November until, when did we recently bring it back on?
Just recently, a month ago.
Month ago?
Yeah, till, uh, yeah, about a month, yeah.
And even at that, during that, during the last month, we've been, we've been testing?
Weekly.
Weekly?
Right.
And then, prior to bringing it back on, we had a couple tests before we knew, and again, it was the raw water test?
Correct.
That we had to be comfortable with before we'd even allow it to be tested with the treated water?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and also too, the raw water test required quarterly, so now we're doing, we've been doing weekly, we'll probably scale it back here now to monthly, but, uh, the DNR requires quarterly testing on raw water.
I just think it's good for the public to know that as soon as we saw something, we took it offline, even.
And we're much more aggressive on the potable water, it's, we have daily and weekly testing on potable water, so that goes on all the time for the drinking water part, it's just the raw water's quarterly testing.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Is there anything that, um...
Was there anything that, from your professional opinion, that we do better, that's not in the Safe, uh, Water Act in that respect, uh, that's worth noting?
Ron?
Well, I think, you know, we, we are, we did sample more than we were required to, uh, we maybe took a few extra precautions, keeping the well offline longer than we probably would've had to, um, you know, doing that weekly follow-up sampling, we could've just took our quarterly samples and let it go and then wait till the next quarter, but I think, you know, everybody wants to take care of this, we wanna know if there is a problem, we're not trying to hide it, we wanna know that it's there, so, um, yeah, if there's anything, I guess we probably sampled more than we would've had to.
Yeah, we, yeah, we usually err on the side of oversampling and being more cautious than us.
I appreciate the attentiveness, that's great, and I mean, that, that's something other cities should be doing too, I think we do a good job here, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thanks guys. Thanks guys.
Thanks Ron.
Uh, next is administrator's report, if anybody's got anything for Scott? Scott's going for us?
A few things while you're thinking of your questions, uh, organizational meeting is April seventeenth, that, that meeting is at five thirty, five thirty PM rather than six thirty. Um, April twenty-fourth is, is the next regular council meeting at six thirty, prior to that, um, at four thirty PM, we'll have a workshop regarding public safety building feasibility studies, there'll be a report from both of the consultants that, uh, worked on the police, uh, feasibility, and also the fire and EMS combined feasibility. April twelfth at two PM, which is, uh, um, Thursday, is the St. Croix Valley Innovation, uh, Business Center grand opening, um, I, I think you all have received some invitations or general invitations or the newspaper invitation, but I'll give you another reminder, that's open to the public, and certainly we're excited to celebrate with our partners, um, on Thursday. Uh, there will be a retirement, uh, gathering for Judge June Cicero on April twenty-seven, from two to four, at City Hall in the Training Room. We invite, uh, the members of council and also staff and the public, uh, to join us in celebrating, uh, the long public service of Judge June Cicero. The Roots and Bluegrass Festival is this weekend, April thirteen through fifteen, there's several venues throughout, uh, more information can be found at the River Falls Chamber website, um, and, uh, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
I just have a library update. Um, I wanna commend our, uh, city staff and, uh, library board and, and Nancy over at the library, uh, for the excellent work that they're doing in, uh, library director recruitment. Initially, we had two, uh, applicants, and I, I believe now that we've had like eighteen in the end, so, that's a refreshing sign to have a, a good candidate pool to choose from, and, uh, we're looking forward to, to meeting and, and welcoming the, the new candidate. Um, also, um, the Moore Directors Council, which is the overseeing, um, board for our, our libraries in the region, have voted to change a policy, um, and we're going forward with that as well. Um, so, how you've normally checked out your library material isn't gonna necessarily be the same going forward. We have a, um, partnership with, um, a lot of other libraries in our region, and if you go into the library and we don't have that book, you can put that book on hold, and it'll pull from another library. Um, going forward, it's gonna be more centralized, so if you walk into the library, um, you're gonna have first come, first served to the books in our library, and they're gonna have the same in their library. So, if we don't have that book, um, or, or they don't have that book, um, let's say, and they put that book on hold, and then we walk in there, and it's available, we'll get first come, first served to that. Um, it's gonna be more centralized, so just be aware that there's gonna be some changes in how you, um, can check out and put on holds. Um, it's kind of a, one disadvantage of that is when you do check out a book, um, you won't necessarily know where you are in the waiting line, is what they're saying at this point. I know they're gonna always work to try to figure that out and get to the bottom and make sure it's efficient for everyone, um, but there's, there are some changes to how you're gonna get your materials from the library.
Okay, anybody else?
Couple of questions if I could, um, Mr. Simpson, can you give an update, so we'd know, um, public know, on the Dog Park out on, um, on Old Dump Road or County Road F, and then as well as, um, what's going on with the Milkweed Park that's behind West Locust Street? It sounds like that's going forward on May first, they're going to maybe start planting the wild, um, flowers and the milkweed back again on that, those two lots?
Um, the Dog Park is, is continuing to be, um, there's progress, continued planning progress on the Dog Park, I'd say we're, I don't know, ninety percent of the way there as far as what it'll look and feel like, and still waiting on a couple partners to see if they wanna participate. We also have submitted, um, at least one grant that I can think of, but I think more than one, to see, uh, we're, so we're waiting to see if we get a couple of those grants, but the Dog Park could be proposed on the, um, former landfill site, uh, slash county, or, uh, County FF Farm, or what the city considers, considers its County FF Farm property, um, be a small parking lot out there and, um, fenced-in area, and, uh, within that, uh, I believe a sub-fenced area for smaller dogs and, and...
What would we anticipate for potentially having that, um, available for people and their dogs?
If I had to labor a guess, I would say third quarter of, uh, twenty eighteen is probably the best estimate of time. I don't believe it'll be done early this summer or in the spring certainly, but, uh, we're kind of working towards a goal of getting it open in twenty eighteen, which essentially means September one is kind of our, October one would be the date we'd have to get it up by if we wanted to get done this year, so.
Well, Eleanor the Labrador is looking forward to it, so that'll be nice.
The other park, I gotta scoot through here, I don't believe that I can recall exactly the details of the other park, we were talking about the...
Well, it's not parked, but it's on the walking path, it's, um, between, behind West Locust, and I think when I talked to, uh, Mr. Cruz, it sounded like, um, and I just wanted you to clarify so people out on, um, TV land would hear, but it sounds like as of May first is when they were going to start, um, planting the milkweed and the, um, prairie grass and flowers back into that area?
Well, that's a testament to the amount of things going on in the city that I don't always, uh, know exactly what's going on, but yes, the, um, we, we're, we've been evaluating different kinds of, um, kinda started as a mowing project, like where should we be mowing, where should we not be mowing, prairie grasses and other things, and then, and then we also had the pollinator group come in and talk to us, so I know Mr. Cruz is working on areas that we can try different types of cover, um, so that's, um, we've got a couple places I know that we're trying to think about getting those in, in, in place, and I know the, I believe it was, I know, I'm gonna misquote, but I think it was the, either the Masters Gardeners or that had some milkweed seed available last year too, that they were distributing, and, and we had helped a little bit in the Parks Department too, so.
Cindy, you still have lots of milkweed seed, don't you? Yeah. And then one other question, um, I know I've asked for, for a few times, but, um, we don't have a final, um, report yet on the housing, um, when is that going to be made to the public so we can see the housing report?
We should be able to release the housing study, um, in its final reports, um, format this Friday, we were waiting, or the consultant, I should say, not us, um, not we, are waiting to get some of the final homelessness, um, population data, um, and some, some data about that, and I, we kind of gave them a deadline of if we don't have that, we just wanna publish the report by Friday, so that's the expectation at this point.
And Alderman Biersted, you've got a rough copy of it already though, to review?
Anything else? No? Okay. Anything else Scott, you got?
I would like to get a, a picture, um, afterward, I guess closed session, we can do a picture, um, the mayor and, uh, Mr. Bjork, and anybody else wants to, to get a picture.
Okay, next, I just got some appointments I'd like to, the council to look at, um, I'd like to appoint Pam Friede through January of twenty-one to the Historic Preservation Commission, I'd like to reappoint, uh, Patricia LaRue and Jim Nordgren through May of two thousand and twenty-one to the Park and Rec Board, um, I'd like to reappoint Lisa Moody through May of twenty-one on the Planning Commission, I'd like to reappoint, uh, Tim Thum through May of twenty-one, and I'd like to appoint Mark Spafford through May of twenty twenty to the Utility Advisory Board. Mark Spafford through May of 2020 to the Utility Advisory Board.
I move approval of your appointments.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, we're receiving, we will recess in a closed session per Wisconsin State statute for the following purposes. 1985-1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. To wit, sale of property in Whitetail Ridge Corporate Park.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we move into closed session.
Second. Watson?
Yes.
Bjork?
Yes.
Biersted?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yep.
Gagne?
Yes.
Odine?
Yes.
Okay, we are in closed session.